So, first thing, let's get this out of the way. So, just a disclaimer, city has determined it is not practical or prudent to conduct in-person city council meeting due to the local state of emergency and social distancing guidelines. Accordingly, this meeting will be an electronic meeting and conducted under Minnesota statute section thirteen D dot oh two one. To the extent practical, members of the public may attend the meeting by utilizing the published link and call-in information. So, does anybody need to go through the meeting protocol at all? Or at this point, are we all pretty comfortable with it? All right, so, we do have to do roll call votes for everything. So, any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have no changes.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt agenda.
Motion by Timmerman.
Second.
Second by Seepersad. All in favor going in roll call, I'll vote. Kate?
Yay.
Josh?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Kate, Amanda?
Hi.
I think that was a yay. So, all right, agenda is adopted. No presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements. So, on to public comments. Commissioner Wolf, did you want to go first?
Yeah, I'm here. I can go first. Can you hear me good?
Yep.
Great. So, I got four things tonight. You know, you and I talked about the CDA, and they have been talking about postponing that, or you know, putting off a little bit that doing down County Road Two there, putting in some utilities and stuff to get some businesses. But I've talked to a few people, and I'm hoping that that can still get pushed forward. I know Barry Stock has firsthand knowledge that when he did that back in the mid-two thousands, you know, it was kind of a bad time, but it eventually filled up because there was space for people to go to. So, it's a good time to do it, in my opinion. And then, at the county, we're talking about letting people, you know, if they're going to have a tough time paying their property taxes, we're going to let them go until July fifteenth if they can't make the payment. But after July fifteenth, there would be penalties and interest down there. You know, pay if you can, but we don't want this to become, oh, we'll just hang on to the money and, you know, not pay our taxes until July fifteenth. So, because everyone, including the cities and the schools and the county, need money. So, we're hoping it doesn't become, everyone just waits and pays. But we're considering adopting that on the fifth of May. Ninety-one and twenty-one, that's the road between Prior Lake and Lakeville, or One Eighty-Fifth. We're going to be putting a stoplight out there this year. There's been a couple of bad accidents out there in the last probably fifteen months, and it's getting busier and faster, and so we're going to slow people down. And then, ninety-one and two there, the roundabout, I don't know if it started yet, but I believe it's going to start here in a week or two. Is that right, Tom, Terry?
We have heard from the contractor, up to the end, me myself.
We have heard from the contractor that they are intending to start early May, but as of yet, we have not received a hard start date or construction schedule.
Yeah, okay. So, and that's what we're hearing too. So, is it should start up in, I can't remember if they have six or eight weeks to do it, or ten, I can't remember, but it's going to move along pretty quickly. So, and that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Commissioner Wolf. Anyone have any questions for Tom before he runs away? None. All right, I asked Josh Malwitz to join us and speak under public comment as well. In, Josh, we were, just our conversation a little bit earlier today, I had asked if you'd join, just and give us, give the city kind of an update as to how businesses are, how businesses are handling things, how the Chamber of Commerce is doing, all that, and what do you got?
Well, I guess basically, thanks for having me, of course, but basically, we just got started as soon as all this kind of hit the fan. March twenty-first, we called an emergency meeting with the Chamber. It's to talk about, you know, what we should be doing as a Chamber in order to support our members in our businesses here. And a couple of things came out of that. One, of course, we wanted to make sure we had as much information out there for them as possible. So, we quickly got a dedicated spot on our website, up and running, so that they had resources they could go to to find out about the SBA loans, about the PPP, CARES Act, all that sort of stuff is on the website now and staying up to date. So, we got on top of that right away. We also wanted to make sure that we had member updates on our websites stating, you know, for these businesses that are still conducting business through these times, we wanted to let them know that we will put them up on the website. So, another thing that came out of that meeting is we decided to make a phone call to all of our memberships. So, we reached out to each and every one of them, and that was very, very, had a very warm welcome on it, very appreciated by a lot of the businesses. They really liked to hear from their Chamber at that time. So, that went very well. We obviously shared with them a lot of the updates that we have, and then shared with them that we're here to help support them through these times, through whatever avenues they might need from us, and a lot of times, it's just the advertisement. So, a lot of members take us up on, hey, post this on our Facebook page to make sure that it's getting out to the public, that we're still open for business, and we're still pushing forward here and doing what we can to stay afloat. So, very proud of our membership and our businesses in doing that. You know, there's a lot of businesses that really have stepped it up and changed their ways of doing business so that they can stay afloat, and very proud of them for the efforts that they're taking. And obviously, you know, making sure that the general public knows that they're available and out there to be used still. So, we had also done a, we offered our members at the time a deferral on their membership that are coming up due here. So, we've got those that want to defer the membership, they have the ability to do so. And then, we also, we went through, right at the beginning of the year before all this hit, we decided we wanted to really beef up the support with the Chamber for our members to give them a better member experience. So, we actually increased our dues right as this all started. And we, at that emergency meeting, we decided to defer back to our existing dues. You know, it's a small increase, and it was a small decrease back, but you know, it's something just to make sure that our members recognize that we're here for them and doing what we can on our end to recognize that they're going through some tough times right now. We do have some events that got canceled here. Ladies' Night, April seventeenth was supposed to happen, and of course, had to cancel that. We're planning, I shouldn't use the word cancel, I guess we're postponing that. We plan to do something with that later on in the year here. The golf tournament is coming up here. That's really kind of hinging on what's going to happen with Fire Rescue Days, because we are on that Friday of Fire Rescue Days, and through the years, it's become a very, very well-attended tournament. I mean, we're nearly a full tournament, and a lot of businesses and a lot of the community coming together wants spot. You know, it is to serve the fire, or part of the, part of the proceeds go to the fire department, or not the department, but their association. So, obviously, we want to keep it tied to Fire Rescue Days. So, it all kind of hinges on what's going to happen there. And I'll probably bring a recommendation to the board that, you know, if Fire Rescue Days goes on, we'll probably still go on with it, simply because we want to maintain that relationship with Fire Rescue Days. Might have a little bit less of a turnout as far as businesses. I'm just kind of imagining that, since businesses are going through a lull right now, they may not have that extra to get out there, the time and stuff. So, regardless, I think we're going to plan on doing it if Fire Rescue Days happens. If it doesn't, then we may decide to go ahead and do it later on in the year still. But just kind of waiting to see what the plans are around that. Lastly, we just recently had a board member that had to step down, simply because his business is doing so well. So, that's, in this, in this time, that's great to hear. You know, also very happy for him, but just want to let everyone know too, that there is a board position open. If anyone knows of anybody, please, please send them our way. You know, the Elkin Market Chamber Board is, it's a fun, fun board to work with, a lot of great people, a lot of really good things happening, excited about the Chamber. We're growing, it's all good stuff. So, if you know anybody, let us know. You can send them our way, just send them to the info@enmchamber.org. Again, that's info, I N F O, at enmchamber.org. So, feel free to send them our way. But that's, I think that's about all I had. You guys have any questions for me at all?
No. Councilmember Seepersad has a nice real estate business and would be looking to join a board. Is that right, Don?
Um, sure.
Oh, I'm just teasing.
Maybe, though, actually.
There you go. Josh, one question regarding the golf tournaments. Have you been in contact with Boulder Point to see how they're, how flexible they can be with scheduling something like that, or rescheduling?
We haven't had any discussion with them right now, but as you probably all know, Boulder Point is up and running. It's crazy busy out here. It's really nice to see people out there practicing their social distancing and getting out on the course. So, obviously, things have changed in that respect. You know, they, they're having one-to-a-cart and all that sort of stuff. So, we'll see as things continue to go forward here, what the distancing rules or suggestions are going to be like at that point. But no specific talk with Boulder about what the tournament looks like yet, other than the fact that we are locked in for that date and planning on it, barring any changes here.
Okay. I appreciate it. Josh, is there, is there anything we at the city can be doing more to help local businesses and help the business community?
Well, I would just say keeping everybody posted. You know, you do a good job of that online. Keep everyone posted with what's going on. When you get a chance, let people know to use their local businesses. Let them know that they are open, just be kind of a cheerleader for the businesses here around town and the current surrounding areas, too. So, be, you know, be aware of that, be cognizant of making sure people know. If you have any inquiries at the city, be sure to send them to us again at that info@enmchamber.org. If you got anything, send them our way.
You got it. Does anybody else have questions for Josh? You're none?
Is there anything, can I ask you a question? Is there anything that we at the Chamber can be doing?
I don't think there's anything that you're not already doing that we could ask of you. I mean, you, look, I think everyone, I mean, we all see the unemployment numbers. I think we all know what the state of the economy is right now and the impact on small businesses. You know, I think you guys are doing everything you possibly can do, or certainly anything I can think of. Does anybody else have, have anything? It seemed head shaken, so, let's just keep working together, sitting in the Chamber, and let's, let's do everything we can for our community.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Josh. Thanks for joining.
All right. You guys have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else on this call for public comments? I don't think I see anyone. Okay, so we'll move on. Consent agenda, does anybody have anything they like to move or have questions on regarding Are you none, any motions?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by? Second by, was that Kate?
Yep.
Yep, okay. Roll call, vote, I'll vote yay. Kate?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda passes. There are no public hearings, we have no general business, so delve into reports. Administration, Tom?
Tonight, Mr. Mayor, we'll be providing a brief report.
Tom, you're muted.
Tonight, Mr. Mayor, we'll be providing a brief update related to COVID-19, specifically on the topic of normalization of city operations. Mr. Mayor, maybe if you could mute. You are, okay. So, for purposes of this, we'd like to go through basically city hall operations, parks, community events, Fire Rescue Days, public safety, and public works. Now, when we're talking about normalization and return to normal operas, operations as a city, to some extent, we're talking about predicting the weather. The circumstances and the factors that influence it are changing constantly. So, being able to provide a, this is exactly what's going to happen, and when it's going to happen, and how it's going to happen is a bit difficult. What we can do is we can talk about what are the factors are that influence the decisions, and what general circumstances have to be in place before we would move back to normal operations. First of all, I do have to say that when we're making these decisions, we're not making them in a vacuum. We are basing those decisions based on one, direction from the governor's office and executive orders that have been issued by the governor's office, and any state legislation that may come down related to the topic. The other thing that we base it on, of course, is Minnesota Department of Health guidance, Center for Disease Control Guidance, and we also base it on any guidance we might receive from Scott County Public Health as well. We also have other resources that we go to that are a little more specialized. We connect with our peer cities with regards to best practices and implementation strategies. In the area of parks, we have the Minnesota Parks and Recreation Association. In the area of public safety, we have the Department of Public Safety and the Scott County Chiefs of Police Association. And so, those resources provide us information and guidance with regards to activities that we've been taking with regards to winding down, but also with regards to spooling up municipal operations. With regards to city hall, and overall as a city, we have the advantage that we're a bit smaller, and so the overall impact on our overall operations compared to other cities has been relatively minor. And so, it's easy for us to go through and talk about those items a little bit more specifically. With regards to city hall, the three main items where we've had change in operations is the closing of city hall to the public, and basically, the remote office-ing of most of our staff on a regular basis. Those two are connected. I would not anticipate that we would reopen city hall to the public until we receive guidance from the state that businesses can return to normal operations with regards to face-to-face contact with clientele. Even today, as the governor was talking about reopening certain businesses, those businesses are, are businesses which do not have face-to-face or counter-forward, as they say, contact the public. One of the things that we have found when we've been closed is that most of the business that we are conducting currently can be conducted through remote operations. And actually, with the stay-at-home order, our level of foot traffic at city hall or demand for it has diminished quite significantly. Most of the activity that we do have is related to home improvement projects and construction that's occurring within the community, mostly, I think, to a certain degree because people are home and they have time on their hands. So, our expectation for opening up city hall, and therefore also restaffing city hall, because that would be necessary to maintain operations under normal conditions, would be tied to the expiration of the stay-at-home order and guidance from both the governor's office and health agencies that we can resume normal operations from that standpoint. Even when we come back, there may be certain distancing requirements or recommendations, and we've already had a number of discussions internally as to how we would obtain it. The other issue we have is that, as we can see right here, we are having meetings occurring remotely. We would not anticipate moving back to a regular meeting protocol. We're actually having physical meetings and face-to-face meetings until basically, the guidance or executive orders would allow for gatherings of fifty or more people, which is the potential attendance we could have at a meeting. With regards to parks, I'll let Mark talk about what is going on in parks, what operational changes we've made, and when we would expect to move towards normalization.
Thanks, Tom. I think you're all familiar with what we've done. The playgrounds remain closed, at least for the foreseeable future. Parks, the trails themselves are getting plenty of good use, and obviously, they're open as well, too. So, it's more of a steady-as-you-go course. I sit in on the MRPA meetings with department heads for different cities who have parks, and I think that's been pretty much the, you know, the kind of the bywords for all of the other cities here. And as far as shelter operations go, we have canceled all the way through May fifteenth. We'll take a look at that every week, so that we give everybody a month advantage. It's been no surprise to people. And about the, the only different thing is, is the disc golf, disc golf course is now open, and it's seeing some use as well, too, out there from people. Can't come to city hall to get the free discs, but they seem to be doing well with frisbees down there. So, it's, it's open, and I think people are using it. And I think, other than that, it's pretty much as we wait for further guidance, as Tom mentioned, from, from the governor, and make some additional decisions as we go along there.
Mark, playgrounds seem to be a thing that's been coming up a lot. I know I've gotten some questions, I'm sure others have as well. We know parks are open, there's the growing feeling that parents should be able to make their own decisions when it comes to kids. I don't know, what's your take? What's your thought on that?
We discussed that at length, the Parks Commission met last Tuesday. And I think for now, I think we'll wait until at least a week or two more and see, the governor's guidance is, of course, we can have it open if we want to. But right now, I think the sentiment is, is that, that we'll maintain closure. One thing I am doing is I'm checking into the possibility of sanitizing the playground equipment, the costs of that, and how often we have to do it. And so, I'll have some further information and some options as we move forward here. So, if we want to do it, we want to, we want to open it safely with the least amount of liability, obviously, as we possibly can. But in talking to other cities, it seems like it's remained the same. It's about two out of three cities are, are keeping them closed, and a couple other cities up where I live, up here near Roseville, have just closed the playground equipment here in the last week or two as well, too. So, I don't see much, shall I say, of opening of those playgrounds as whole. So, should you want options, I've been working on them here, too, as to possible ways we could do this, and maybe do it, do it safely. But I've got some other things to explore, and at this point, we've decided to leave them closed, so to speak, better to be safe than sorry.
Thanks, Mark. Back to you, Tom.
Sorry, couldn't hear you.
So, with regards to community events, the big summer community event, of course, is Fire Rescue Days. Josh talked about that earlier. At this point, we are looking at having a discussion, essentially a go, no-go discussion in early May. Any large event has a certain amount of lead time for planning for the event. You need to start making commitments with regards to scheduling, financial commitments, supplies commitments, staffing commitments, volunteer commitments, et cetera. Josh was talking about it with regards to reservations at Boulder Point, et cetera. We've talked with all of the major event organizers, and it's been determined that we really need to make a decision that first full week in May, whether or not we are going to be holding the event, and whether or not it would be a cancellation or a rescheduling of the event. That does happen to coincide with regards to the current deadline for the stay-at-home order, and what comes out of that, and direction from the governor will provide guidance on what we need to do. Based on the current tone and tenor of the governor's recent presentations, including today, we think it is, at this point, highly unlikely that they will be permitting large events with large gatherings by the time we are getting to Fire Rescue Days. In fact, the governor did mention today that the state fair could potentially be at risk at this point, and we will need to make decisions in early May about where we think things will be in June. As I indicated, there will be a discussion about whether or not we cancel, cancel some of the events, or we do look at rescheduling at some point later in the summer season. And there'll be more to come on that item, but we really need to wait until that first week in May before we have that serious discussion.
Tom, how, I mean, is it feasible to look at having Fire Rescue Days in September and like that? Trying to put you on the spot with the firm answer, I'm just curious if it's something that is even really feasible.
That's one of the things that we'll be talking about. So, there's a couple of factors that affect Fire Rescue Days. One is availability of facilities, and two is a certain level of certainty related to weather. The further you get into early fall, like September, October, you have the potential for greater chance for inclement weather, and you also have a potential chance of colder weather. So, trying to hold a parade when it's forty degrees and thirty mile-an-hour winds usually isn't great. Now, you do run the risk of weather any time you hold it, because you can always have rain and showers, but that'll be part of the discussion. Right now, if we're looking for a rescheduling, we may be looking at something possibly earlier than that. We normally hold the community picnic, which is another one of our summer events, in mid-August, and so that would probably be the first timeframe that we would target for potentially a rescheduling. But these will all be discussions that we have with our other primary stakeholders.
Thank you. All right, public safety.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as normalized operations for the police department and, and our public safety, I think the best thing that Tom said to summarize it, it's like trying to predict the weather three weeks from now. Until you get closer to that date and time, it's really hard to know where the winds are going to be at, what are the numbers, what are their contagions, what are, are the numbers spiking, are they going down, going up? And I think the best cautious approach is, is the best way to proceed, and that's for public safety. What we're going to be doing as emergency management director, I, I wouldn't begin to tell you what it's going to be like in three years, just like the modeling has been so off and wrong, and the weather seven days from now is often adjusted as we get closer and closer. That's the best analogy, because there's so many moving parts and factors. But I will reiterate what Tom said, as soon as we start seeing numbers going down overall, as soon as kind of the other agencies are giving that guidance, I think to change what we're doing would be premature. So, we are not seeing a huge effect, and I'm knocking on wood here, a huge change, a huge swell in Scott County of reported positive tests. So, the chances of running into somebody in Scott County that is positive is still really low. But to go back to normal operations before we have some more information and to see what it's like, I think we're just going to stay the course. And once we start getting those key factors of testing, availability of testing for law enforcement, right now, it's hard for anybody in emergency services to get a test if you are feeling bad or you do have some symptoms. Until an officer or firefighter can get a test right away, and until kind of the risk has subsided to having them exposed and then taking on a service, we're just going to keep the same, same course in conduct. And as, as we have these meetings, as we see those indicators kind of trend down, then we'll start to ramp up what would be our normal services. But much like city hall, we're doing everything that we've always done. The medicals that we're going to, we're still going to the emergency medicals, we're still handling calls, when we can take them in person, we will. But we're, we're not that far off of our norm. So, people aren't seeing a drastic, different police department. So, when we do go back, it'll be kind of just a subtle incremental normalization of what we do.
Are officer hours still what they were prior to any of this, or is that, or have they been cut down?
No, we're, we're still operating at the same capacity where we were before. The only time we have hours down is when officers are sick. I have to say that our staff is extremely dedicated, so... extremely dedicated. So prior to this, if it didn't feel 100%, they still wanted to give their best to the city and not go without service. So they tended to come in. But right now, at my urging and kind of a change in the culture, if you're not feeling 100%, if you have a cough, if you have a cold, or you're just not feeling your best, they're staying home, taking temperatures, and not risking the public of exposure. So we have seen a couple of more shifts that have gone down because the officers err on the side of caution. But we're at normal staffing. As you know, I gave last update, Brenton has started in field training, and he's in his third week. So in about two, little over two months, we should have that next night shift filled up and more hours on the overnight. So no, we haven't done a reduction in staff. We have not felt the need to go to an emergency schedule and make our officers work longer hours and then give them longer stretches off. We just haven't seen that need yet, as the numbers haven't really dictated it here in the county.
Thanks, Brady.
I am open. Is anybody have any questions or anything about operations? Any council members or anybody here have any questions about what we're seeing out there or what's trending? All right. Great.
Thanks. And last is Public Works. Corey's not on, I don't think. Was there anything from a Public Works standpoint, Tom?
Corey was not participating in the call this evening, so he asked me to give his report form. It's very similar to Brady's. Of all departments, probably Works has probably been the least affected by operationally because of COVID-19. About the only thing that they're not doing normally is home inspections related to meter checks when people are moving in and out, and meter inspections. We've been putting those off until restrictions are lifted. That change, we don't anticipate to occur basically until things are normalized, until stay-at-home order is off. And basically, the guides from the governor's office and from the state and federal health agencies are saying, you're basically back to normal operations using the normal protocols that you typically use. And so with that, overall, I can say that our departments are, as a city, we're still providing basically the same level of service that we were providing previously. There are some inconveniences to our residents with regards to access to City Hall. You have to drop your building permit in the drop box out front. We'll process it and mail it back to you. And there are some inefficiencies internally because of that and with working remotely. But overall, we've been handling it very well. And I believe that the service to our residents has been not significantly impacted. And I do think that once these restrictions are lifted, we will be able to very, very quickly spool back up to normal services.
Before we go on to the rest of the reports, does anyone else, any other council members have any questions for Tom or anybody else regarding this topic? See, head's shaking. So Tom and Mark and Brady and everybody, I just, I appreciate the update. And I'm sure I speak for the rest of the council. We appreciate all the hard work that you guys are doing. So as far as the rest of reports, was there anything for Public Works, Tom? Or Fire, or should we just go right to Engineering?
We have no written, nothing for the other reports. We primarily covered it all during the COVID report. So I think at this point, we could probably move on to the community development item.
Does Rich have anything? I'd hate to skip Engineering. I thought I saw him on the call. Yeah, Rich is there. He's just muted.
I'm here. I have nothing for you.
All right. Good to hear from you, Rich. Community Development.
Good evening. The only community development item that we wanted to inform the council about is our intent to do some citywide code enforcement in early May. There's memo in your packet. You may recall that in the past, limited by staff availability. Code enforcement was done more so on a complaint basis, kind of ramping up a little bit over the last year or so. But this May would be the first time we intend to make kind of a concerted drive around the entire city. Also, just pointed out in the memo that it is an increasing, seems to be increasing expectation of the community. The results of the 2018 community survey showed a kind of dissatisfaction in this area from residents regarding lack of code enforcement occurring in the city. And we're also seeing increase in complaints that we've received in recent years. So we think we're kind of looking forward to creating an improved culture of people complying with city codes. And also just wanted to let the council know that the newer codes related to the storage of recreational vehicles on properties, you know, will be a little more lenient with that, more of an education for the first few months rather than being extremely strict about it. We did try to do some educational efforts in this, from the city newsletter and Facebook posts to get the word out regarding some of those regulations. But we'll continue to be more education approached on those particular items. Have any questions?
Now, Tom, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, we do feel that we have received guidance from the council in the past based on our adopted policy related to code enforcement. But to be very straightforward, related to this, both Renee, previous times in our careers have been through moving from a complaint-based approach to a more proactive approach, and both involved in clean sweep type programs. In the first couple of seasons, especially the first season that you go through it, you naturally are going to have a higher rate of non-compliance. And there is the potential that there will be a little bit of pushback on this. And I'm going to straight up ask the council, we don't want to go forward and do this if you guys don't have our back, if we start getting pushed back on this.
I have my full support.
You have my full support as well.
I have my full support.
Thank you.
This is all recorded, right?
Definitely recorded. I think it's a good opportunity to pick out which ordinances that the city or the community is unhappy with. So if they don't know it's there, then we have to enforce it so that they know it's there. And then they'll become more aware and do their part with our community.
Yep, we've already done some public education of the types of ordinances that are out there, and that this is coming. And usually, when you're going out and doing these inspections, you're picking the most common items, junk vehicles, tall grass, junk and outdoor storage. The ones that generate the most complaints are also the most common. What you tend to find, or I've found in my career, when I've done these types of programs or been involved with them, is the first year, you tend to have a pretty high degree of compliance. And then it's an exponentially decreasing curve over the next few years. Because part of what you're doing is you are demonstrating that there is actual enforcement, but you're also changing the culture of the community. And so you usually ramp down until you have just those, the occasional offender and that core of properties which are constant ongoing issues. But at that point, you're able to focus on those.
Well, and I guess I would just add, I mean, the reason why I am very much in full support of this is your guys' approach, our approach, the city's approach, has always been education first, work with everybody, not heavy-handed enforcement or anything like that. So I mean, I think we've ramped up over the years, listening to the community as it's changed and adapted. So I think this is a natural progression. And to Amanda's point, we'll continue to learn throughout this as well and adjust when necessary. So.
Quick question. Who, which staff member is this falling to? I know in the past, we did not really go out and enforce it unless it was called in because of staffing issues. How do we sit today now to be able to handle that?
This will, Renee, do you want to handle that?
Sure. I think Haley and Brady and I can tag team on this. I can say that the police department has started during their regular routine visits or patrol, been stopping and talking with people that do have violations. And the first week in May, Haley and I have two dates scheduled that we will be going out and doing, basically driving through one day the New Markets side of the community, one day the Elko side of the community. Haley has been tracking, for the most part, the violations. And I think Haley would continue to be the number one, the part, the enforcement issues that are being handled by the police department, they enter into their system and they track those. But we do coordinate together on the addresses that have violations.
What I, I guess, too, I mean, I would volunteer and be happy to go with any of you guys at a certain point, too. And I mean, if you're going to get chipped for it, I'm there to back you up and, and obviously have the conversation. But I mean, I think it'd be kind of fun, actually, especially if it's with a police car or something, too, to go ride with the guys. Obviously, not with whatever. But I mean, think about it. I mean, if we start to get a lot of pushback or something, too, I mean, I'm happy to put myself out there and have those conversations and really support you guys and put my neck on the line or whatever as well.
That's a perfect job for you, Josh.
We deputize Josh.
Well, I wouldn't wish it on anybody to have to do that. And all seriousness aside, I talked about this since day one that I've came. It's these quality of life issues. And that's really what these come down to, is they're very personal. And when you go to somebody's home and tell them, listen, you're doing something wrong, you're in violation of the ordinance, your, people are complaining about your home, that becomes very personable. And it's something that goes along, I think, with our community values, that we do everything by the police department, the fire department, city council. We take it very seriously. And I think it is a tough task for us. And as we do more, it does take resources. It does take time for our police department. But it's, it's a fine line of having a city staff member going to a house because it can get temptational. And it can get scary for somebody to come tell somebody they're doing something wrong. And that something they've been doing for years is now going to have to change. And so I think Elko New Markets' approach, and I cannot say enough good stuff about Renee and Haley, is that educate, find out what everybody else is doing, and be reasonable. And I think if we proceed that way with a heavy education-based enforcement, and do that for a period of time before we start having to take and give people consequences for not complying, I think in the end, that's the best way to go. I think we are outfitted for it. We have the staffing. But as we get going forward, this will be, it's not, it's easier said than done to get compliance a lot of times. So I think everything's in place. Haley and Renee have written some awesome ordinances, and you guys have approved them. And hopefully, as we take this journey together forward, like the ATV one, it'll be successful.
Did you have your hand up at one point? No, Tom, hopefully you did, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add that the Planning Department staff, our community development, as we're out doing our inspections, we will not be entering people's property and knocking on their doors informing them of violations. We will be tracking them from, you know, probably the road and, and sending letters. On occasion, I have had to visit a property, but I have not done that in recent past without a police officer, based on some scary experiences.
So typically, when I'm talking of pushback, that typically takes place in phone calls to council people, people showing up during public comment at council meetings, and in today's environment, discussion on social media.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments on this?
I guess to that point, though, you know, I don't follow the social media stuff as much anymore because I'm always on the computer. So I try to avoid that. You know, if there are things that you guys are seeing, to make sure, and you do a good job of this, but just alert us when some of those posts are happening so that we can kind of track that and be prepared, perhaps, if we're not following it as closely as we used.
That's good. All right.
Joe, I do have one more community development item. If I could just let the council, remind the council that we have a planning commission meeting next Tuesday, beginning at seven o'clock. It's our first virtual planning commission meeting. We do have a public hearing for a new development. You may have seen some negative feedback on social media. So I just wanted you to be aware in case you haven't seen it. And it will, it will be our first virtual meeting, and it will include a public hearing, most likely for a, you know, development that some people aren't happy about. So.
All right.
Packet has been posted on the city's website.
It's a Zoom meeting, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is it, can we get invites sent out?
Of course. In fact, the invite, the Zoom meeting link is on the city's website, on the planning commission agenda. But we can send you a specific, a special invite.
So here's the question I have for the city attorney. If we're going to have a quorum of council people attending, but they're not participating in the meeting, do I need to post it as a special meeting of the city council, as long as they're not participating? Andrea?
Yes, if they're attending and not participating, they're still taking in information relating to a, a, a public business. So yes.
Can I get a quick show of hands from council members who are planning to participate in that Zoom meeting or attend the Zoom meeting?
I'm going to be a maybe, which would make you have to post it.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Renee. Let's see. So on the parks, we got, Mark gave us a nice report earlier. We have the minutes from the Parks meeting. Mark, if you're still on, did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Just wanted to update you or thank the Public Works Department and, and Rich. We're getting an early start on capital improvement projects. We're working on the trail connecting Woodcrest and Windrose. Next week, we'll start relocating the Ball Diamond. Well, not actually relocating, but building the new one and then using the old one for the new hockey rink. And we'll be starting with the drain tile work there, which the three neighbors there, I think, are looking forward to because it'll actually improve their own drainage as well. The other major project we're working on is the adding the new playground equipment over at Old City Hall Park. That should take place starting the first week of May as well, too. We did file the grant agreement with the Twins for the $10,000 and received another $5,000 from a skate park foundation to use in our skate park if we want to. Parks Commission is going to try and figure that out here on May 12th. As you may recall, there's a big open space there that we always imagined having another piece of equipment in there. But we want to see if the new equipment that we had here a couple of years ago actually was as quiet as we thought it would be. And I think, as everybody knows, it's turned out to be actually a little bit quieter than we thought we had before when we took the decibel levels here earlier this, earlier last year as well, too. So things are moving along as far as that goes. Baseball season is still a little bit up in the air there. That hasn't started yet. So I'm not sure there's been an official cancellation, but I'll, I'll find out on that. If that happens, that will allow us to get started working on the new hockey rink and lights down there in Rowan. If that happens, that will allow us to get started working on the the new hockey rink and lights down there in Rowan and Pond a little bit quicker than we had anticipated. The dollars are there and so we've moved the schedule up a little bit so that we can maybe get this done by next year. We will put the two, we will put the new basketball, full-court basketball court in in the spring of 2021 as well, too. You'll see more of this when we do the capital improvements plan and I go through that with you on May 14th. So questions?
Thank you. All right, CCEC. I'm guessing there's not going to be much there. Uh, scale. So we will be having a scale meeting in May. Scale exact will be the first Friday and then the full-scale meeting will be the following Friday. It's my first meeting as chair and it will be a virtual meeting like this. So I don't know how that's going to go, but hopefully we'll have some fun. I think the as far as that scaled general membership meeting, Representative Angie Craig's going to be part of that. Talking, well, I won't steal her thunder. I'm not sure what it's, what specifically she like, she plans to talk about, but I know she's been very active with like one of her committees is involved in small businesses and she's been very active and out there regarding the different small business assistance programs. So I'm guessing there'll be something along those lines. And beyond that, I would imagine that the rest of the meeting will be regarding how different areas of the county are handling different COVID-19 things. You know, scale is something that depending on who you talk to can get a little bit of a bad rap. I think we've worked hard to not, maybe not change that, but well, now I'll stick with change it. I think this is, in a time like this, it's, this is where scale has an opportunity to really shine. I think I would encourage everybody that's on this to check out the scale meeting. I'm very interested in hearing what's going on in Jordan, what's going on in Bell Plain. What are townships seeing? There's I don't know. This is scales designed so we can all work together and and benefit from each other's experiences. And I can't think of a better time to do that than now. So. So let's scale exact. Tom, did you have anything for service delivery?
I did not. We did not have a service delivery meeting this last month.
All right. Remind, who do we have on the Unified Transit Plan Steering Committee?
No, actually, it would be me and those meetings have been canceled as well.
Okay, MVTA. Is that one, Amanda?
Yep, that's me. Next meeting is on Wednesday and it will be their first remote meeting as well. So I will be there.
I-35.
That's July in April. We'll see if it's on in May. I haven't seen anything come through yet.
Okay. We had Josh, Josh Mollwitz on here earlier, so that would cover the chamber report. So on to discussion by council. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss? Come on, Josh, you always have something. All right.
My four alarm burger from and from Firehouse was absolutely delicious.
So I've been having to make that extra spicy and it's, it's amazing. There's our little commercial for Firehouse at our council meeting.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Well, hearing no other discussion, is there any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by, who was that?
Second, Novak.
Second by Novak. So we'll vote, I'll vote aye. Kate?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Meeting's adjourned.